Saismer Haizer.
Good morning, I'm here.
Samish. Seeing her either. Mr. Fresh.
Morning.
Ms. Cowan.
Good morning, everybody.
Ms. Derna Kofax.
Morning.
Ms. McLaughlin. Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Samish. Ms. McLaughlin. All right, so we currently have three board members away from the table. So it looks like we have Dr. Braebrand and are we still waiting for Kirsten? Yes.
Dr. Presidio, do we need to pause for another moment before we begin? Or are we going to begin?
I want to welcome you all to the electronic work session to discuss the Advanced Academic Program, External Review Recommendations. This is a follow-up to a meeting that we had in May when we had a presentation from our experts that were hired to do a review of our advanced academic program. I myself and Ms. Pukarski will be managing the meeting today. And we will use our standard format. We will have our presentation from staff. And then board members will each have, you know, three minutes in a cycle to make comments, ask questions, et cetera. So we will take a lunch break at approximately 1:00 PM and then continue the conversation. After that lunch break, and then later this afternoon, we will be discussing our legislative programs. And Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Derna Kofax will be managing that portion of the meeting. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Braebrand to open this up for us today and give the board an expectation of, you know, what you expect us to do at the end of this presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Tolan. I really have a great team here today. Dr. Presidio and Ms. Maloney are going to walk you through our recommendations in response to the AAP consultant study that you saw back in the spring. Dr. Plucker and a team of experts around the country did provide recommendations to us around our advanced academic programming. And we are here today to respond in a systematic fashion around those recommendations and provide our response to those, as well as providing a multi-year budget to support moving forward and implementing these recommendations. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Presidio at this time, who will lead through the presentation with Ms. Maloney, and we will be putting our ask up front as we begin the presentation. Dr. Presidio?
All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Braebrand, and good morning, everyone. If our board clerks could go ahead and bring the presentation up, thank you. So we're very excited to be here with you today and to share some of the actions that we're planning to increase equity in our advanced academic programs. I want to start out really by thanking Ms. Tolan and Ms. Pukarski, who are excellent meeting managers for today, and gave us a lot of help in organizing the presentation for today. You will see there are 48 slides with a lot of detail and a lot of content, but are responding to some really substantive recommendations from the external study. And we've really planned a lot of strategic actions to increase equity. So it really does warrant a lot of discussion today. And we do promise to be as brief in the presentation as possible and preserve as much time as possible for board discussion. The major outcomes, of course, that you see from the presentation today are to make sure that we're providing information on the context based on Virginia regulations that govern school divisions, provision of advanced academic or gifted programs and services, Commonwealth. And then most of our time will be spent on responding to those recommendations from the external study and sharing those strategies for increasing equity in our advanced academic programs. And of course, we're going to provide some information on an implementation timeline and associated costs on our recommendations, as well as share some information on metrics and measures that we'll be using for measuring implementation success and implementation fidelity. So to get started, we just want to ground this conversation and make sure that it's grounded in a deep understanding of the Virginia regulations that govern gifted education programs in our state. And where we need to start with that is making sure that we're all using a common definition when we talk about giftedness and gifted students. And in Virginia, the Department of Education provides that definition of gifted education for us. And when they talk about gifted students in Virginia, we're specifically talking about those students who either, one, demonstrate a high level of accomplishment, or two, students who show the potential for higher levels of accomplishment when they're compared to other students of the same age, experience, or environment. And the first thing I think that's really important to understand about the Virginia regulations is that they do require us to serve not just students who are already demonstrating high levels of accomplishment, but also to serve those students who would demonstrate potential for high levels of accomplishment. So not only do we have really a moral imperative to make sure that we're identifying students and developing their talent and providing them opportunities that are rigorous to grow, we also have a legal requirement in Virginia to do so. Secondly, I think it's really important to point out that when we talk about identifying the potential in students, we are comparing students of the same age, experience, and environment. And this is a really critical point to understand that we'll come back to when we talk about one of our equity strategies around the use of local norms in schools as part of the eligibility and identification process. Additionally, VDOE regulations specifically call out a number of actions that schools are required to take when identifying and providing services to students in gifted programs. For example, you'll see some of those listed here on the screen. We do have to screen, identify, and serve students. We must use a nationally normed ability test as part of the identification process. And we do need to use multiple criteria in the eligibility process to seek out students that would typically be historically underrepresented. So thinking about students who might be twice exceptional, our English language learners, for example, or students who might come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds. We also have to allow direct referrals from families, from teachers, or from the students themselves. So direct referrals in Virginia are allowed when considering eligibility for advanced academic programs and services. And then once a student is found eligible, they have to be provided the opportunity to work with similarly situated academic peer groups. And they must be given a differentiated curriculum that meets the needs of advanced learners. So the majority of what we want to cover today really is in response to the external program review that was completed and presented back to the board back in the spring of this year. And we want to share our strategies in response to each of those recommendations. So here you see basically a summary of the recommendations from that external program review. And again, we were very happy to have the opportunity to work with the foremost experts really in the field of gifted education in this country. Dr. Plucker and his colleagues from Johns Hopkins University, University of Virginia, and the University of Wisconsin. And together, the research team gave us basically five different areas of recommendations that you see here. And we're going to go through each of those in detail. For each of those recommendations, we'll give you just a high-level summary of what that recommendation was from the research team. We'll provide some background information so that everybody's familiar with what we're currently doing with respect to our programs and services in that area. And then we'll provide information on equity strategies in terms of our responses to the recommendation, as well as an estimated timeline for implementation and associated budget costs for each of those recommendations. So to dive into this in more detail, what I'd like to do is turn the presentation over to Kristin Maloney, our amazing coordinator of advanced academic programs in FCPS, and she will take us through each of these recommendations in more detail.
Thank you, Sloan, and thank you to everybody on the board for the time to talk about this today. There are a few recommendations here, and I'm going to be as quick as possible, but also try to make sure that I give the right amount of information for any decision-making. But the first recommendation that's here is kind of an overarching, which is that the researchers found that there are many different perspectives and perceptions about what AAP should be or what it actually is in the district. And that one of the very first things that we need to do is make sure that everybody understands what our goals in advanced academics are. So for a little bit of background, I know when we talk to folks, people often think when we talk about AAP, what immediately comes to mind is this idea of full-time Level Four services. What this slide shows is that the work of our AAP team and the advanced academic resource teachers in all of our schools comprises so much more than that and really provides a lot of opportunities for students in Fairfax County. We like to talk about it in terms of two major goals that we have in our program. On the left, you'll notice our focus on talent development. And this reflects our beliefs that all students in Fairfax need opportunities to work with rigorous curriculum. And it shows up in multiple ways in Fairfax classrooms. It can be through the use of AAP curriculum and strategies in our strategic plan goal, through strategies for culturally responsive instruction that mirror many of the approaches that have been a part of gifted pedagogy, like taking on multiple perspectives and using a critical lens. It also encompasses student ownership of their learning through reflection, goal-setting, and identifying passions and pathways. And that shows up in our work as a district with our work on Portrait of a Graduate and district-wide work on project-based learning. And while we recognize that the importance of talent development is important for all of our students, we also know that interventions like those found in our Young Scholars model are important to identify and nurture students who are historically underrepresented populations in gifted programs. There are later recommendations under the front-loading category to improve the dosage of interventions within the Young Scholars model so the results can be more consistent across the district. And just as important as talent development is making sure that we meet the needs of our students who are identified and to make sure that they are growing. So you'll notice on the right-hand side, that is our conceptualization of our different levels of service that we have in Fairfax County. The broadest part of the triangle shows where all students receive access to advanced academic curriculum and strategies. And as needed, there's greater frequency and intensity of services provided with each level of service. This attention to differentiating for students' needs around content, process, product, and learning environment ensures that we meet both the cognitive and the affective needs of advanced learners. The continuum of services approach in Fairfax provides multiple entry points for students and attends to the two elements that Sloan talked about within the regulations, the need for the academic peer group, as well as the need for differentiated curriculum that is research-based and aligned with the needs of advanced learners. For example, the need for greater degrees of abstraction or less structure and increased ambiguity, or differing levels of independence. So the researchers found that there were places where there were gaps in understanding across the district for the reasons that we have the types of programming that we have, and that we need to do, we need to do some work on making sure that we do professional development. So that comes out in a later, a later recommendation. But this logic model describes some of the areas that we would focus on for next steps. So what we believe is that if we develop that understanding of research-based practices that support making sure every student is growing from where they come in the beginning of the year until later in the year, and that when we talk about equity, we are talking about advanced students and advanced learners' needs as well, when we talk about every student by name and by need. And if we distinguish some of the ways that people are clumping together grouping practices as all one thing and really dig into what it means to cluster group and ability group versus tracking, and if we develop in teachers a deeper understanding of differentiation and building that understanding of what it means to differentiate up and not just the differentiating with scaffolds, and ensure that all students are experiencing productive struggle and growth opportunities, then we'll be able to impact the impact of our continuous services through expanding talent development and aligning the beliefs of our program goals and school actions. So this is the phase where we get into what do the researchers actually say? On the left, they talk about clarifying the goals of the advanced academic programs as a system. That sounds really straightforward, and it's also really complex. And it comes out in a lot of the other recommendations as well. So it's called out because it's critical, it's foundational to everything that we do. The good news is it's something we're already starting, and it doesn't cost any money. But it interconnects with quite a lot of the other recommendations if we really want to deep, more deeply into what it actually means. So recommendation two is the largest one of all of the recommendations. And this one is how can we reduce inequities in our screening system? And they categorize the different recommendations into several different categories: testing practices, referral processes, screening data points, central selection process, and appeals processes. And what we're going to do for each is break them up into those categories and give you a little bit of background about each one. So just overall, the big picture on our current Level Four screening process, you can see from this graphic, there are many different steps to this process. The process begins with universal screeners. And then from that information, we use that information to help us with one of the two pathways to the central selection, which is the second-grade pool. And then we also have another pathway, the referral pathway. And you can see there that the pool is what is responsible. We're getting about 30% of our students to the table for central selection consideration. And the referral pathway has been more around 70% of the students that we screen. The next step that you'll see there is that the local school puts together a portfolio. We use a holistic case study approach, so nothing within a file is weighted. Everything is considered holistically. And there's a list there of the different types of data that schools, local schools put together for consideration: work samples, test scores, progress reports, the Gifted Behavior Rating Scale, and opportunities for parent input. After the local school puts together the portfolio, it comes to the central selection process. We do training with committee members, and we have committee members from a lot of different roles throughout the county. Our training has an equity focus. After people are trained, we offer five to six days of screening, and we have about 100 members per day. They come and they read in tables of six, and they read on their own and make their own decisions. And consensus of four is what determines eligible or ineligible decision. And then for any student who is found ineligible, there is an opportunity to appeal. Those are initiated by parents. They have to include new information, and the new committee reviews the original file plus the new information to determine if there is compelling reason to overturn a decision. So connected to these screening system recommendations, the first thing that the researchers recommended were some recommendations related to our testing practices. The first one that is here, the researchers in their analysis found that our ENAT is not finding different or more students than are found through our CAGAT. The ENAT for background is a nonverbal test comprised of sequences and puzzles. And when it first came out, everyone in the field hoped that it was really going to help us find English language learners at higher rates. And in many places, not just in Fairfax, that hasn't panned out to be true. We find, we find those same students through the CAGAT. So they recommend eliminating the ENAT as a universal screener. We could maintain its use for some situations where the CAGAT may not be appropriate for students, and that would save the system about $130,000 annually. The second recommendation in this study came up as an equity concern that some families access testing from private psychologists to get individual testing. And those tests can cost anywhere from $1,000 to $2,000 and aren't equally accessible to all Fairfax families. This is an equity issue, and it reinforces a focus on testing as a prominent component of our screening file when actually it's just one of multiple data points. So the researchers recommended that we should eliminate that outside testing. The next set of screening revisions have to do with our referral processes. And so for background information, this is a reminder that to get to consideration for central selection, there are two pathways. And the one on the left, you'll see, is the second-grade pool. And that is a way that we cast a net to capture a number of students who we will automatically screen based on the markers from our universal screeners. And that pathway comprises about 30% of the students who get to the table. The other pathway is the referral pathway. And as Sloan mentioned in the beginning, it is part of our Virginia regulations that that those referrals can come from parents, teachers, any adult who knows the student or students themselves can refer. And approximately 70% of students in the central selection process come to consideration through this pathway. So the recommendations of the researchers were to use local building norms rather than national norms and identification. This strategy, as well as universal screening, which FCPS has already employed for many years, are often two of the primary recommendations made in terms of achieving better equity in gifted education. This slide defines national norms and local building norms. National norms compare a student's performance to peers of the same age and grade across the United States. And local building norms compare a student's performance to grade-level peers within the same school. So if we go back to the two pathways for central selection, and we think just about that pathway to the second-grade pool pathway, there are currently some schools that through the use of national norms send over 40 students in their second-grade pool to central selection, while we have other schools that may have zero students in the second-grade pool. And we are missing top students in a school not being considered. And it's important to note, this is just to be considered for, for Level Four services. This isn't an automatic ticket to Level Four services. So this is just to get to the table for consideration. In contrast, using local norms, we would be finding the top students in each school. Similar to how local sports teams for schools are chosen, it ensures that the students have opportunities to work with their academic peer group. Local norming allows us to capture a more accurate representation of talent across all of our schools. And this is being used by some other large districts like Montgomery County, Maryland for the past several years. So researchers on the external team recommended use of local norms. And this slide shows modeled information about what we would get in our second-grade pool in terms of frequency and percent of student representation if we were to use local building norms to create the one pathway, the second-grade pool, to central selection. It's important to note that if a student is not in the second-grade pool, referrals are also still a second pathway to central selection. But using local norms will ensure that all schools have top students at their school considered for Level Four services regardless of whether their parents submit a referral. So the recommendation within the review was to make adjustments, revise the referral process, because it's not equally accessed by all parents, some of whom may be more in the know about AAP services and screening processes than others. However, the referral process is part of the Virginia regulations. That said, we can work to make sure top students from each school get to central selection via the second-grade pool through the use of local norms. The next set of screening recommendations have to do with the data points that we use within our screening process. And more specifically, we're going to get into the use of the Gifted Behavior Rating Scale and the Student Work Samples, recommendations that the researchers made around those two points. This is some background information about, oh, excuse me, about the Gifted Behavior Rating Scale, also known in Fairfax as the JIBR. So if I slip back and forth into that language, we affectionately call it the JIBR in Fairfax. It was co-created with George Mason University, and it's been revised over time in consultation with our ESAL office and our special education team. And it is an annual screener that we give to all students K through five. The JIBR asks committees at local schools to look at student behaviors in four categories: exceptional ability to learn, exceptional application of knowledge, exceptional creative productive thinking, and exceptional motivation to succeed. Each one of the categories provides multiple examples of what that behavior might look like. For example, exceptional ability to learn might mean the student demonstrates in-depth knowledge, or it could mean that they're acquiring language at a rapid pace. It also might mean that the student learns skills and makes connections without formal instruction. And so that's part of the work that our ESAL and special education teams have been working with us on, is making sure that all of the indicators under each of those categories is culturally and linguistically responsive. The committee then thinks about whether what is being observed about the student is outside of the norm compared to students of similar age background and experience. And then they also consider the context of students who are culturally and linguistically diverse or who might be twice exceptional to think about how that might be playing out in what is being observed. Lastly, the committee decides, is this something that's happening in all content areas or just some content areas? And how frequently does that happen as they make the final rating? And these ratings are made by committees at the local school, not a single teacher. The researchers found that the JIBR helps to find students in underrepresented populations, but that some schools perceive parental pressure to increase scores that brought about validity So their recommendation is that although the JIBR was shown to support finding students from underrepresented population, we may want to replace the tool with something that might be more resistant to parental pressures that have created inequities and perhaps consider a commercially available tool. Instructional Services has surveyed Virginia school districts about other tools that are being used in our neighboring systems. We found a variety of commercially purchased tools and some that are district-created like the JIBR. And are going to be working this year with with some of our our stakeholder groups to analyze options that we might have. The analysis will evaluate the degree of match to Fairfax programming, which is an important component, its ability to reduce inequities. And we want to obviously maintain the ways that the JIBR currently supports schools in sharing important data about students in underrepresented populations who may not have high test scores, but who have many anecdotes of exceptional behaviors that are captured on the JIBR. The cost for tools can vary depending on which one is selected, but an estimated cost based on averages of the things that we've been looking at would be about $190,000 annually if we wanted to maintain screening all K through five students annually. The second data point within screening considerations that the researchers noted as an equity is the work samples that parents may send from home. Just for background, several years ago, screening was adjusted so that schools were required to submit at least two work samples from opportunities to use AAP strategies or curriculum. We recognized at that time that it was not equitable that some students were not having those opportunities and we weren't seeing work samples of what they could possibly do. And so that was something that has been adjusted and has helped us over a long period of time. And the ARTs do a lot of work to make sure those work samples get in the files. This recommendation also aligns to what we've heard from our central selection committee members, that school-based work samples provide a more even playing field. And they have often said it would be it would be better if we raised that number from two to a higher number and that we saw more things coming from from school. So for this recommendation, this is something that, you know, we do agree with, but because of the current situation with distance learning and that there's a lot of blurred lines between the work from school and home, we would recommend implementing this next year. The next set, under still the screening revisions, this has to do with the central selection process and ways that we might improve that. So this is background of what we do in our current central selection member training and the actual process. So all new members attend a half-day training. We have a strong equity focus. People have the chance to practice using files. We put together that presentation and co-present it in collaboration with our ESAL and special education colleagues. Members are recruited from many different roles and we try to set up our committee tables to have as many as many different perspectives as possible. At the beginning of each of the five to six days of screening, we do spend time doing a grounding and review the equity focus that we have. And also remind people about the way that our holistic case study approach works. Then when they actually start reading in their tables of six, each person reads individually and it takes a consensus of four for any decision. The external review showed that students in underrepresented groups are twice as likely to be found eligible through central selection, but the number of students who are at that get to that process is not proportional to all subgroups. And that links back to our use of of our of our norming that we use. So the researchers recommended that we have another set of eyes on our training. And Instructional Services is working with the Equity and Culturally Responsive team to review components of the training for new committee members so that we can determine if there are additional ways there can be an even stronger equity focus on the work of the committee. And then lastly, the researchers advised that appeals are not evenly accessed as an option and that we should reconsider the appeals process. Similar to the recommendation about the referrals, this is a tough one because it is in the Virginia regulations that we do need to have an appeals process. But we will be working, we are surveying other systems around what they do to see if we can get some ideas about ways that we can reduce inequities and still stay in compliance with the state regulations for gifted education. Recommendation three is all about a focus on front-loading. And that encompasses several approaches, including a K through two, increased K through two enrichment opportunities, similar to what you all heard about two weeks ago when APAC presented on their charge from last school year. Deeper levels of implementation and intervention through the Young Scholars Model. And making sure the continuum of services is implemented with fidelity in all schools, which has also been an APAC charge in the past as well. Researchers know that we can improve the screening system, but that without more work in this area of front-loading, both early and often, we will have a harder time strengthening our equity outcomes. So they recommend two primary focus areas to be working on with front-loading. One is the strengthening of implementation of the Young Scholars Model. And the other one is expanding local Level Four services to all elementary and middle schools so that full-time services are available at every neighborhood school. So for a little bit of background, this is, we have a little bit of information about what the Young Scholars Model is. It is a strategy that has been in place for a number of years in Fairfax. It was started by my predecessor, Dr. Carol Horn, and is nationally recognized. It is, talks about finding students, focusing on potential, which is also part of our Virginia definition of gifted. And focus on underrepresented populations and to provide interventions to support success in advanced academics through school-wide commitment to access affirmation and advocacy. Right now, we have a total of 97 elementary schools with some level of Young Scholars Model implementation. All 46 of our Title I elementary schools have this and 51 of our non-Title I schools have it. By nature of students matriculating up to secondary school, each secondary school has a feeder of young scholars that they are receiving. So we have also had a focus in recent years on making sure that secondary schools understand the Young Scholars Model so that they can continue that support in grade seven through 12. To become a Young Scholars School, all that needs to happen is a principal reaches out to Instructional Services and we collaborate to determine the best approach to launch the wide understanding. We have some Google sites that support schools in that. And we also, that is one of our favorite things to do in our offices, to go out and talk to schools about this model because we feel it is so important. It is a conceptual model and has four major categories. Committed professionals, finding and identifying students from underrepresented populations, nurturing, guiding, and supporting students to make sure that they're successful after they've been identified. And essential elements like extracurricular activities that might be in the form of before or after-school programs or summer school opportunities. And professional development, making sure that everybody in the school understands what Young Scholars is all about and what their role in this school-wide commitment is. So a couple of years ago, we came up with two rubrics, one for elementary and one for secondary, that that help schools to understand what in more concrete terms, a highly functioning Young Scholars Model would look like in their school. There's always room for improvement. And so what we've been doing is using this, these rubrics in our academy classes and in our compass courses for school leaders so that schools can set goals. Last year, this was also used with all the Title I schools. We we made the message that when the full-time resource teacher was given to Title I schools, that the purpose behind that was strengthening the Young Scholars Model. So with that, we started collecting data on where schools self-assessed and where they were at the end of the year. We also collected data on what strategies and goals they were making. And then we also tied that to data on how many young scholars end up being referred and then found eligible for different levels of services. The ARTs and school leaders have mentioned many times that this rubric has been really helpful for them in terms of understanding in more concrete ways exactly what a Young Scholars Model is about, because I think there was a lot of fuzziness about that. And that is consistent with what the researchers found, is that while some schools are highly functioning and implementing the model, other places have had gaps in understanding. And as a result, it's, they said that it was implemented with doses of intervention that were too small to have impact. So we do also flag students with, when they get the Young Scholars label and that sticks with them through secondary schools so that we can see how do they do once they get into high school? And we track their advanced courses. And we do find that most young scholars take AP and IB courses and earn As and Bs in their classes and also report planning to attend a two-year college. So that that helps us to assess long-term whether this model is having impact, just like these rubrics will help us to assess shorter-term progress. So since the renewed commitment to equity and Dr. Braybrand's charge district-wide to put equity at the center of everything that we do, I can tell you that our office has been getting an increased number of emails from school leaders to ask about the Young Scholars Model. I just got one this morning from a secondary school that said, you know, we want to learn more about this. So our team, as I said, that's one of our favorite things to do. So I will say that our equity focus in the renewed commitment that we have to this most recently has really, I think, made a lot of schools kind of perk up and pay attention to this in a new way. So some of this initiative can be improved through that increased focus and accountability. And some of it will also require additional investment. So you'll see here within our plan that our staff works really, really hard and we're stretching about a million directions. But if we could have staff to support regions and schools in their goal-setting and enacting strategies and program monitoring for fidelity and accountability, that would be really helpful. We also plan to increase professional development and provide, it would be really important to provide extracurricular opportunities for young scholars more consistently. And that is one thing that the review team called out are the long-term impact of targeted programs like Project Excite, which are extracurricular opportunities for students in underrepresented populations. So we have a budget item for that as well. The next piece of front-loading that they called out, our local Level Four expansion to all of our elementary schools and middle schools that don't currently have it. And so this is just some background information about what local Level Four is. Local Level Four allows students to receive full-time advanced academic services at their neighborhood school. Teachers are trained and use the same curriculum as is used in the Level Four centers. Schools employ grouping strategies like cluster grouping to ensure students have access to an academic peer group in addition to the curriculum. And we currently have 67 elementary schools offering the service and four middle schools that, we don't call it local Level Four, but it's a similar type of idea where there's cluster grouping of eligible students at some non-center middle schools. This approach expands access to more students when schools end up identifying additional students to participate in one or more of the content areas. And that access to the full-time curriculum is there with scaffolds and support. So the recommendation here is to expand local Level Four to all elementary and middle schools over the next five years to use cluster grouping, including with Level Three, to make sure there is training and to provide a system for program evaluation and accountability. In instructional services, we have been working with our regional assistant superintendents and facilities have mapped a three-year plan for expanding local Level Four to all elementary schools. And we plan to work with stakeholders to articulate an accountability plan that would include things about what grouping practices are being used, whether the preparation that happens for teachers and the fidelity of curriculum use. So you'll see there that there is a plan for expansion for that over the next three years. And that rapid of an expansion, we would really need to be supporting schools, the full-time resource teacher will be part of that support. And also having someone within our office to be able to help with that would be important. There's also a one-time cost to make sure we can fill in some gaps of curriculum materials in some of those schools. There is also one note that facilities, you notice as part of the team and that there are some facilities issues that we will need to figure out if we are going to make sure that this is an opportunity in all of our schools. The fourth recommendation is around professional development. And the researchers here said that without strong administrator support, it's difficult to envision continued progress towards FCPS equity goals. This links back a lot to our recommendation number one about making sure we're all on the same page and understand the overall calls of everything that we're trying to do in advanced academic. Professional learning in a large division with many initiatives can be challenging, but the researchers feel that following the recommendations would help improve staff understanding about research-based strategies for supporting the needs of advanced learners and twice-exceptional students. Through staffing expertise in all of our buildings with our advanced academic resource teachers that can help support that job embedded professional development, increasing access to professional learning and coordinating the equity efforts within AAP with the larger equity efforts within the whole district. And I know that's something that has come out with MSAOC as well, of coordination of how do we use the equity leads in the schools to work as part of a team on Young Scholars and all of this and show staff how all this ties together and is interconnected. So for this, the researchers recommended that over the next five years, we increase ART staffing to 1.0 in each elementary school. Consider additional ARTs in large schools. Minimize the use of ARTs in master scheduling so that they are there to work with CLTs and and teams. And and to also expand this to middle school. We actually, within the budget, you'll notice, have done that as a three-year phase-in, knowing that you all had motions about that in the last couple of weeks for the importance of this. And it has been in the APAC reports for the past several years in terms of just about anything that AAP touches, whether it's school-based services, being a good local Level Four off the ground, or making sure there's solid Young Scholars implementation. The role of the advanced academic resource teacher is critical to so many of of these Right, next, they noted that we need to have more professional development. We also should have a short-term priority for principals and central administrators on research about the needs of advanced learners, including twice-exceptional learners. We are working on a district-wide professional development plan. And we also recognize that there is a lot of professional development in Fairfax County Public Schools. So we're working on some modules for school leaders and teams to be able to do that on more of an on-demand purpose. There's a lot of value to getting together and talking about and processing things together. And there's also a need to be able to have access in some virtual ways so that if someone can't make it to a meeting, they still can get the learning. They also recommended adding a twice-exceptional specialist that would be shared between special education and advanced academic programs that would have a focus on professional learning and consultations at schools based on individual student needs and profiles. I think this one, this one is, talks about capturing the success stories of schools. And this is something that we've done in our principal meetings. But as I mentioned on the last slide, those, not everybody can always make it to all those meetings. So we're working on some on-demand modules so that we can capture some of these stories. There are some really wonderful things going on in a lot of our schools and we need to capture them so that we can learn from one another about that. The other piece there is about just tying the pieces together, making sure that there's strong collaboration between administrators, advanced academic resource teachers, equity leads, and parent liaisons. We have some schools that are amazing. They already put this together. And so we need to show how they do it so that that can be replicated in more schools and highlight those successes. The last recommendation is that when the researchers went out, they found that a lot of the angst about advanced academics came from something they repeatedly heard in focus groups, is that parents perceive TJ as a pathway that compelled some of them to over-focus and be over-involved in the identification process. And they noted that that we have a lot of, we have a lot of wonderful opportunities in Fairfax County Public Schools and pathways for success and rigor are available in all of our high schools. And that as a district, this is a bit of a perception problem that we need to work on so that families don't feel that this is such high stakes and that there are opportunities and pathways for students in multiple ways in Fairfax. and pathways for students in multiple ways in Fairfax. So for background, we have honors courses that are open enrollment in all of our middle schools and high schools. We also have career and technical education. All Fairfax High Schools offer advanced placement and or international baccalaureate classes. Those are also open enrollment. We have FCPS online campus and select high schools offer dual enrollment courses. There are six high school academies that offer advanced technical and specialized courses that integrate career preparation and work based learning and industry certifications. And those areas are listed in that sub bullet. And FCPS is currently in the procurement process for an external study of career pathways with a focus on equity of access and opportunities to programs that build post secondary readiness and meaningful connections to workforce demands. So the recommendation was to change the narrative about TJ and help parents see multiple pathways. TJ has been a hot topic in so many school board meetings and the admissions process is currently being reconsidered. So that work is underway. There's also a response to make sure that we have regional promotion of the opportunities at local high schools so that parents better understand all the opportunities are available in all of our schools and the success stories of students who have gone on to selective colleges from each of our schools. And then, as I mentioned on the last slide, the CTE Academy study will provide further recommendations for expanding specialized programs and access to more Fairfax students. With that, I'll turn it over to Sloan.
All right. Well, thank you, Kirsten. You did a great job covering an incredibly comprehensive amount of information. So we'll give you a chance to catch your breath here as we wrap up before we go into board discussion. And I just wanted to touch briefly on kind of the timeline, the budget, and then impact measures. And first, what you see on the slide here is a general timeline, kind of summarizing many of the equity strategies that Kirsten just presented across the five different recommendation areas. So I think the big nuggets here is that we have a lot of work that's currently underway or planned for this school year or for next school year. For example, the stakeholder engagement is already underway as we talked about needing to make sure that all of our stakeholders have a common understanding of our program goals, which of course is necessary for us to be able to implement the programs with fidelity. So that work is underway. And we also have work planned and underway to make adjustments to our screening and eligibility process, looking at the use of local norms and taking actions to reduce the inequities that can result from the outside testing, as the researchers noted. Additionally, budget permitting, we would hope to work with the school board to increase some of the resources necessary to support successful implementation of many of these recommendations, particularly as it pertains to increasing full time staffing for advanced academic resource teachers in all elementary schools and support for the scholars program and expansion of local level four programs. So on this slide, what we've done is broken those costs down. In each of the areas, you see the corresponding recommendation on the left hand side of the chart, and you see the year that we would be looking at trying to implement that particular strategy with its associated cost. Of course, the researchers did suggest a five year timeline, but as Kirsten mentioned, we've definitely heard the urgency and we feel the urgency as well when the board and the community have talked about the need, increase equity of access and opportunity into our programs. So we've put this together on a three year timeline instead of a five year timeline. So it's accelerated, but it also does allow the ability to spread out some of these costs across multiple years because we know that we're going to have budget challenges in any fiscal year and upcoming fiscal years in particular as a result of trying to recover from a COVID-19. So what you do see also at the bottom of the chart is we have indicated where things are a recurring cost or a one time cost, and then also any potential savings that might result from some of these recommendations. And then finally, we've included some information on metrics to help us measure the fidelity of implementation and the impact of the strategies that we're talking about. In the interest of time, I won't go through all of these. We certainly can come back to them and discuss them in more detail if you would like. But for example, we have strategies in here associated with expansion of local level four programs and using local norms in the eligibility process. And we would be looking to, you know, monitor the impact and the outcome of those actions by looking at things like increases in more equitable participation in level four programs across student subgroup. So for each of the major strategies, we've identified those monitoring measures and those metrics that we would use to measure the impact and the outcome of those strategies. So with that, I think what we would like to do is turn the presentation back over to Ms. Tolan and Ms. Pekarsky as our meeting managers to facilitate board discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that comprehensive presentation. Kirsten, that was a lot of information to go through very quickly. We already have a number of board members that would like to make comments or have questions. So we will go ahead and start with Dr. Anderson. And Ms. Malberg, are you timing for us today?
Yes, we are.
Thank you so much. Dr. Anderson?
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Thank you, everyone, for this great presentation. I'm hoping to get through all of my questions within my time. I want to start with the slide, I believe it's slide 10. If you could pull that up, please, that talks about cluster grouping versus tracking. Can either of you speak to any of our processes in FCPS that may be more tracking than cluster grouping as in respect to AAP programming?
So I would say tracking is more along the lines of there's kind of a single entry point into a service. And one of the things that I think our continuum of services provides multiple entry points into our different levels of service. So I don't see what we do in Fairfax as tracking. We have, we have a lot of different, we have access for everybody and we also have multiple entry points for different types of services all along the way. And then it gets to open enrollment once we hit secondary school. So I definitely think that, you know, when we look at this, figuring out how to make differentiation manageable for teachers with all the different needs of students going on. So cluster grouping is shown to be a way to make sure in the research, if you put together a certain number of students, that differentiation is a lot more likely to actually happen for students.
Thank you for that clarification. My next question is regarding slide 35, where you do talk about cluster grouping. I do know that some of the schools in my area do have local level four, but some parents feel that that process is, or rather that provision is very different from what is provided at the center. Can you speak to what would be the expectation regarding consistency in this model when we do have this cluster grouping across all elementary schools? What are going to be the basic expectations so that it is consistent and just as robust as in all of our schools?
So we have program standards for our level four program. They have been around since our 2013 review. And that is something that at this point, it has always been something optional for schools to self reflect and think about. I think that part of this plan goes to a little bit more of a tighter expectation about reflecting on what those things are. The expectation is we have, we have planning and pacing guides about how to use the full time curriculum. And that would be a baseline within a local level four class, and that would be the starting point and then scaffold for our students who may need to do that. The way that cluster grouping works with that is that there would be a cluster of identified students who would be receiving a full time curriculum and then other students can join in for specific subject areas or for all the subject areas. So that provides a school flexibility.
Dr. Anderson, if I could just add to that, because I received a couple of community parent comments after the slides were posted, asking about centers and the role of centers if we change local level four to all schools. So I think we just want to make sure that we're clear with the community on this. At this time, in the recommendation, we're not providing any recommendations on taking away the choice to attend a center. All we're suggesting here is that we would provide the opportunity to receive local level four services at a students based school. Basically, what we've been doing over the last really five years in terms of expanding local level four programming, and that's an equity strategy to make sure that students can get access to local level four in their neighborhood school. And when we do that, and when we pair that with norms, we know that we'll have students who have an opportunity to receive students that is more representative of our student population as a whole. But we're not recommending to the board to close centers or take away that rental choice. This is just an expansion of programming services at our base schools.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. And I think that aligns very well with what I shared just last week regarding this very topic. Having opportunities at each of the elementary schools, it's paramount and to help with many of the issues you've described. What I want to be sure of is that we're not, that the local schools are not getting an inferior product. We have to be sure that it's just as robust so parents don't feel ultimately compelled to still go to the centers because that's where the better services are. And I'm just looking for some reassurances in terms of how are we going to ensure, how we going to make sure that the local services are just as robust as provided at the centers.
And if I could just add a little bit to that, I don't want to take your time, of course, your three minutes, but a few things in addition to what Kirsten said, you know, beyond the program standards and the professional development that we do for our teachers in our local level four programs. Of course, having that full time advanced academic resource teacher there at that local level four school, having them onboard full time before we implement a program is incredibly helpful because they help with the curriculum work, the implementation for professional development, and they work with the building administrators to make sure that the school can implement all the program standards for our programs, our local level four programs, which are the exact same program standards that we have for our centers. So having those resources and human capital in the school and the time to implement the program is really important. So we start that implementation program for new level four programs in advance. We don't just start it a few months ahead of time. We typically start at least one year ahead of time so that we can do that preparation work to ensure that we have a high quality program.
Thank you. And by the way, your response doesn't count for my time. I know the meeting managers could confirm that. I want to push back a little bit regarding what Ms. Maloney shared regarding the standard for local level four. As I shared previously, when I visited our schools here at Mason, multiple of which have local level fours, it is very different from school A to school B. Can you speak to that a little bit? And again, there's a perception that some approaches are lesser than others.
So the, when we talk to schools about becoming a local level four, we present a couple of options for the ways that the model might work. When they have, they look at within their school context, what makes the most sense in terms of their grouping and how they want to do things. So that's why, I mean, you will find, hopefully within parameters of certain models, you may find different things at different local level fours. The center is every student in the class is identified through central selection and that's just a very simple and clear cut, like that grouping of that school. Whereas in local level fours, you'll have a mix of students who have been identified as well as students who have certain subject area strengths and other things going on. And so that's when we work with schools to do that, we give them a couple of different models to follow. So that's why every local level four shouldn't be completely different, but it should be within a couple of models that we have.
Okay. I would definitely like to know some more, more about those models. I do want to say I'm very supportive of the recommendation to limit work samples to school based work because as a former school administrator and teacher, we do know that very often the homework is grading the efforts of the parents and of the students. So I think that's definitely an appropriate recommendation and I'm in full support of It startled me, it's right in my ears. Ms. Tolan, I will have a go back. Thank you.
Ms. Corbin Sanders?
Sorry, it just takes a moment to get ready. Thank you very much, Kirsten, Kirsten and Sloan. This has been very helpful. I do have a number of questions and I'm glad that you were clear that the expansion of local level four to all of our schools does not mean that we are pulling back from our center based programs. I think that there is some angst about that. Having said that, I want to follow up on Dr. Anderson's comment about the differentiation between pro local level four programs at individual schools. I have a significant concern about fidelity of implementation, and I know you all have heard this, not only when I was the chair of the Advanced Academic Programs Advisory because the same level of programming isn't available at each of our centers, but I've expressed this concern ever since I've been on the board, that we need to have fidelity of implementation. Part of that fidelity of implementation is an accountability model. And so I would like to understand better from either you, Kirsten, or Dr. Presidio about how you will hold individual buildings accountable for ensuring that the local norms are adhered to, that there is appropriate representation and participation and access to opportunities at each of those schools. And so that accountability piece is my first question. My second question is regarding the engagement with our advisory groups. I saw a number of groups listed. I did not see the Title I advisory group listed and Title I has a major role in this as does the MSAOC. So I'd like to see here a bit more about what you're doing with them and AIPAC as well as the FCAG, the Fairfax County Association for the Gifted. Then lastly, I would like to know a bit more about where you're going to get the funds for this. When I add it all up, it's $6.7 million in tight budget years. You know, $6.7 million is a lot of money. What are you not going to do to be able to cover the cost of $6.7 million when it's fully implemented?
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Corbin Sanders. I'll start and then Kirsten certainly can add more to my comments. I think I would start with your first question around accountability. You know, there's a number of different things that we do to support accountability of implementation in our, in our programs for advanced academics. You know, first of course is having the program standard and having a rubric that we can use to measure a school's implementation of services against those program standards. So we've kind of developed a built in accountability system that supports fidelity of implementation. That's not the only thing we do. It's just a tool and a framework that helps us promote and support fidelity of implementation. The other thing I would say around that is we do a lot of professional development and support. So Kirsten does a lot of work with school based administrators and the advanced academic resource teachers and provides a lot of PD and a lot of coaching to make sure that they can successfully implement the program standards as designed in all of our schools. And then we get into, you know, just the monitoring of what's actually happening on the ground and in our schools. And a lot of that work is done in partnership with our region offices. So again, a region assistant superintendents and executive principals working within their regions and their pyramids. And we've had a really good conversation with our regional office as we've looked at preparing this presentation because we know if we go with a rapid expansion of local level four programs, for example, that we are going to have to work very collaboratively across our region offices to do that monitoring and to do that coaching and support for our schools. So there's a variety of different strategies that we use. And I think the success of those strategies depends a lot on the resources and the investment that we can make in our schools. So that really kind of brings me to your second question around the budget work. And, you know, we put together a proposal on a three year timeline with the hope and the goal that we might be able to identify funding through the budget process over a three year period of time to support this implementation timeline. We certainly understand that that also might not We certainly understand that that also might not be possible and that there are a lot of competing interests and a lot of competing priorities when the budget is developed. So if we're not able to do that, what I would say is that most likely the implementation timeline would need to be delayed because when you look at the associated costs on the chart at the end of the presentation we put together, the vast majority of what we're talking about is in the advanced academic resource teachers. And we do feel strongly that in order to implement the program successfully and to have a strong fidelity of implementation, that those positions are critical in the schools. So there's not really any cost shifting that we could do within the advanced academic office budget to be able to provide staffing at that level, but we certainly could work with the board to look at other possibilities across the division's budget as a whole is one strategy, or we could consider a delayed implementation from the three-year timeline. And then I'll invite Kirsten to add anything on either of those and to maybe speak a little bit more about your last question, which is around how we're collaborating with our stakeholder groups.
Thanks, Sloan. The only thing that I really wanted to add, that we, I talk to the folks at T-PAC regularly. I presented for their, their committee last week, and, and their chair and I have, have spoken. So that was just an oversight that that was not listed there. But, but we do plan to, you know, as, as we get into certain components of this, to reach out to these groups for their feedback and ideas about how we can, can improve some of these.
So I believe I have some more time. I think we talked about the process for fidelity of implementation and the philosophy behind it, but we haven't talked about the accountability. And that accountability piece is critical because what we have today is we have a disparate approach to how we do local level four and frankly, how we do our centers across the county. And so I would like to have as a next step, an accountability piece for that. Additionally, on the comments regarding the budget, we should not be looking at things in isolation. We are a, and I would urge that we have a look at budgeting across the system rather than stovepipes. I will take a go back, please.
And Ms. Tolan, if I could, we certainly can respond in more detail in the next step, but again, at the end of the slide presentation, I went over it pretty quickly, but there are a number of accountability metrics that we would be using. And with respect to the fidelity of implementation, for example, and program quality, a lot, a lot of what that would look like would be student outcomes, open-term access and participation in the program and then achievement in the program. So we do a lot of tracking right now on an annual basis of how our students are doing in our local level four programs compared to how students are doing in the division overall, but more importantly, compared to how students are doing within our centers. And when we look at that information, you know, again, using measures like, you know, SOL tests and other standardized measures that would allow us to compare performance, students in our local level four programs do really just as well as the students in our centers do. And that's true on standardized measures. It's also true when we look at student performance measures like grades as well that would be more subjective. So we have a lot of those outcome measures already built in that we've been using to support implementation fidelity and accountability for local level four programs. Again, we've listed some others along with collaborating with RAS to make sure that schools are actually implementing the programs with fidelity to the division standards. But we certainly can follow up on that as a next step as well.
Thank you, Dr. Presidio. Ms. Derna Kofax, and then Ms. Omech.
Thank you. Ms. Corbin Sanders and I have very similar questions, but I do want to say I am happy and thank you for these recommendations, some that came not only from our consultants but our advisory groups that I highlighted when I talked about TJ and what needed to happen. I'm so happy to see strengthening the Young Scholars Program, AAP curriculum for all, front-loading, and AARTs as part of this recommendation. I too am glad to see that you are not recommending closing the centers because I don't think our research has talked about that. And also, when you talked about the regulation, I think I need some clarity. Virginia Department, I guess for the Gifted says, part of what they said is such curriculum and instruction are offered continuously, sequentially, and achievement of student outcomes, and provide support necessary for those students who work at increasingly levels of complexity that differs significantly from those of their age-level peers. So I would like a little clarity on how did centers come to be? Do you still see them as, as necessary? When and why did they start? And I'm assuming it's because of something like that. So I'll start that. That will be my first question.
Tammy, I, I don't have the exact history on the years that they started and, and the exact reasons behind it, but, but definitely meeting the needs of advanced learners when you have people who, students who are outside of that norm area, who need to be working above grade level and with increased levels of complexity. You know, that, that is a model for grouping those students together to ensure that they get the curriculum that they need.
Right. So I, do you want to say something, Sloan?
Well, just, just briefly, unfortunately, Kirsten and I don't have the historian's view of, of, you know, the center programs that they definitely predate both of our involvement in FCPS, but I would say in the nine years that I've been here, you know, additionally, when I've learned more about centers, having the ability to have students receive the full-time services and the full-time programs in a, in a environment where they're working with an academic peer group has been incredibly important for those families that would prefer to have that choice. And we replicate that at our local level four programs, but there are some families that would prefer to have the choice of the program at the center, and that's certainly fine, and we understand that and we respect that. So again, I just want to make sure that folks are clear that, you know, in this proposal, we're not suggesting that we would close that or eliminate that experience. We're just saying that we would replicate that experience in the neighborhood schools or the base schools.
To, to the extent that you could, I guess, right? And so, but I, I think it's important because if I look at some of my data, and you're right, I haven't been here but nine years either, but when I look at some of the data and those kids who really need, who, who fall into that last portion significantly different from their age group, I think it's important that we still provide services for them, particularly if the local level four, if there's only a few of them, a handful at one school. Some schools may have a lot of these kids, some schools may have one or two or five, and I would hope that we still would offer them that ability. One thing that I saw missing was an analysis of the math and science curriculum because otherwise I feel we're not starting at a level playing field. Can you speak to that? Is, is that part of what you plan to do?
So we didn't respond to that in this particular report because that wasn't one of the recommendations as part of the study. So we didn't include that in our recommendations here. Noel Kliminko is here. She's our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We have been doing work around access to advanced math, and we've been looking at that as a leadership team and discussing it quite a bit, actually, pre-COVID. We were doing some pretty in-depth work on that. We still have a lot of work to do, there's no question, but the goal is to make sure that we do have equitable access of opportunity to advanced math in all of our schools, and we do have some additional work to do there right now. Noel, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Good afternoon, everyone. I don't know that I would add a whole lot, but we definitely are, the math team in ISD is working very closely with the advanced academics team. As you all are aware, within level four, all of those students are enrolled in advanced math, but we also have advanced math opportunities for the students who are not in level four. So we're looking at how those opportunities are available in our, our local programs and our centers and our base schools. And we are at a point where, we are almost at 100% with our schools offering, having those opportunities for all students. But we need to continue to work on that, ensure that schools have processes in place to identify students. And we're also looking at our curriculum to ensure that, that all students, not just students who are in advanced math class, do have opportunities to ensure that they are engaging, enriching, extended math instructions just even in their, if they're not in advanced math. So that is work that is currently underway, looking at how we really get that AAP curriculum more established in our, our Gen Ed math classes and really enhancing the opportunities for all students. As far as science goes, you know, often it comes up during these meetings about our advanced science. We don't really have advanced science in the same way that we have advanced math, remembering that our advanced math is an acceleration. We do have science experiences that allow students to be very inquiry-based and hands-on. We do have curriculum that is associated with level four services and is also available to all of our students. So it's a slightly different model in science than it is in math.
Thank you. I, I would ask that, as I, I guess I will, I will just say this will be one of my next steps, that I would like a deeper dive into that so we understand where each school is, where we are within the community, to see what offerings we have in advanced math and, and what our science programs look like. So I will, I will offer that as a next step. Because as, as my colleagues had, had talked about, the, the issue of parity, and you spoke to it a little bit, about who will be responsible and who will be held accountable for the standards to analyze the fidelity of the programming at each school. I don't know if you have, you talked, you spoke about it a little bit, but just let me finish this thought and then I'll take a go back. Would we have something, I, I know Kirsten's office is very lean, and they do fabulous work, but could we have something like project momentum that analyzes and reviews what this programming looks like, what this level four? Because I'm assuming RAS as well as AP, EPs would be responsible for this, but I kind of don't understand who would be. If you have any thoughts on that, Sloan. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. That's a really good question and similar vein, I think, to what Ms. Corbin Sanders was getting at as well. I think it really depends what the board would like and would need for an accountability report. You know, we do a lot of that work right now. Like I said, we look at the outcome measures for student achievement. We look at the participation in terms of student participation in the programs, and we collect that data in the advanced academic office right now. Then we work with the region offices around the fidelity of the program experiences in our schools. So again, it would really kind of depend what information you were looking for, what you would like that report to look like. You know, if it was sufficient to have participation and performance measures, I think that's something that we could get pretty easily. If you wanted something more comprehensive than that, then we probably would need to bring in some other offices like a research and strategic improvement, or perhaps do something a little bit more broadly. But some of the things I think are the main components in terms of, you know, program participation, student numbers, by student subgroup, and performance measures are things that we already have and could provide.
Thank you. I'll follow up when I go back.
Ms. Omech, and then Ms. Karen Camaro.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. I'm, you know, I, I'm happy to see things like local norms and some of the adjustments we're making. I have to say, unlike how I normally approach these, I, I, I'm really disappointed. I think there's a lot more we could have done here and, and expanding opportunity for all. You know, the, I'm, I'm looking at this and, and part of the, the resources piece, there's a, there are answers that we know work for kids that we seem to be too afraid to do because, and instead, you know, we're talking about various fixes here and there and budget items that are going to bring us back to the same place and, and that are funneling these resources to the same kids who are already getting these resources. So I'll start with my first point. In terms of the implementation issues, you know, the, the problem with this is we've been talking about fidelity of implementation for equity on AAP for decades. I mean, this is the fundamental problem. So I, I think to, to rely on training, PD, you know, professional development conversations, that hasn't gotten us anywhere so far. I'm not expecting it to get us any further. I think we really have to be proactive and thinking about this differently and how we account for those failures. So, and ensuring that we're still successful despite them. I do have a question about the pipeline into young scholars. If you could kindly elaborate about the details of how a child ends up from just being in a classroom to being in that program?
Um, we say with identifying for young scholars, we, we would like to have students identified as early as possible, and it can happen all the way up through 12th grade. We have young scholars who get identified in high school. We say err on the side of inclusion. So if you see a student for whom you see some potential, some, some noticings about they're working outside of the norm of what other students of similar age background and experience are doing, then you would go ahead and label them as a young scholar and start giving them interventions. So the interventions include access to advanced academic strategies and curriculum right away. It also includes other strategies that will ensure that they're successful with that. So for example, and that, that like, like I mentioned, that can look different in different schools, which is part of why we gave that rubric, to give some more concrete examples of what it, it could and should look like. But at different schools, some things that, that may go on are, many of our schools implement the Student Leadership Academy for sixth-grade students. As they're transitioning into middle school, they have after-school program that goes on where they have speakers of students who, who, or not students, adults who are in different career pathways, who look like the students who our young scholars are so that they can care about their experiences and how they got there, where they were. That's layered on top of, they'll do things like coding and other advanced curriculum. They will also do college visits. So that's just one example. In some other schools, they do before-school science programs. So it's a little, again, it's flexible, and the school decides which interventions they want to layer on top of the access to the advanced academic strategies and curriculum. But the idea with it is that we want to build the student's sense of identity and, and their resilience so that as they hit those challenging courses in secondary school that they will, they will power through this. They'll realize that's part of the learning process and not a, oh, I don't belong here, it's just part of what happens as part of learning.
Yeah, no, it does. I appreciate it. I mean, I think this is, again, pointing to, we're relying on the labeling of the child. We're relying on, I mentioned the training piece, for principals to even opt into this program. This should be something available to everyone, no matter where you are in the county. We're waiting for families to opt in to, whether they're going to appeal later on or have to be a part of this. We know these are the fundamental barriers, right? The kids we're not capturing are the ones who have these gaps already, or there, there are access barriers. So if we're really intentional about this, I, I don't see something that's going to break through that, but I see Dr. Breber wants to comment.
Abra, thank you for this, thank you for this commentary. Here's what's game-changing. Here's what's game-changing. In the old days, we said a few kids have the gifts and we'll have a few centers sprinkled across our system. Now we're saying we're going to put local level four in every elementary school. There's talent, talent development. There's talent in every elementary school. That is a major culture shift. I know a couple of the board members, Ms. Corbin Sanders, Ms. Dernak Kofax, talking about accountability. We haven't had the accountability in every elementary school that gifted kids, that talent development is part of the necessary priority because we didn't even have the programs. Those kids got identified and then moved to another school. Right? We don't, in some high schools, we have football championships, state championships, six straight years. Other teams, like the school I was the high school principal at, have never won a state championship. We don't not offer the football team, right? We have only done advanced academics in some schools. We're going to move it to all elementary schools and put the supports in place to make them successful. That is a big game change, and local level norms means everybody gets to play basketball in every school. Whether you win the state championship or you just play in the you win the state championship or you just play in the district finals, or you just get to play basketball. Every kid in every school has talent and deserves to have programs and services to develop that talent. That's what we're saying today. And I do think, again, we've had a center-based model for 40 years. It goes back to really the integration of our schools in the seventies is when gifted education really, really took off, which is its own historical analysis for another day and time. But what we're doing is democratizing advanced academic services to every elementary school and using local norms to fill those programs and develop those kids. I think there's a tremendous amount of development that can happen, we think it, that can happen in elementary school. Right now, we take kids' temperature at second grade. At second grade, we can do more in putting local Level 4 in every elementary school will make it all, everybody's accountability. And an AART will be there to make sure that happens with the principal and the AART. Classroom to classroom, is there higher level services going on? It's already part of our strategic plan, by the way, already part of it, to have AARTs making sure teachers are doing advanced academic lessons in general education classes. So more of that and more of local Level 4 and we'll have a culture change. And we're not waiting five years. This is three years. I'd like to do it sooner as well, but I'm also trying to make sure we can deliver on what we're proposing. Thanks.
And if I could just add to those comments, that was very helpful. Thank you, Dr. Brabran. And I think Ms. Omeche, you were also talking about making sure that we're doing with our front-loading in our Young Scholars Program. And I just want to make sure that folks are clear that what we are proposing here is very different than what we've done before. In the past, it was optional at the school whether or not you have a Young Scholars Program and whether or not you provide Young Scholar Services. We're saying it's going to be required per school. Every school will be required to implement the program. In the past, there was no budget at all to support that work. This proposal does bring some program funds to support the Young Scholars Program. In the past, we didn't have anybody at central office really to work and support those schools in implementing the program. And we are, as part of this budget proposal, increasing some additional central office staffing and support dedicated to make sure that schools are implementing the Young Scholars Program and can do it and can do it well. So there are some pretty big, pretty, pretty big changes in here compared to what we've done previously just for Young Scholars. And then there are some, I think, really significant changes, as Dr. Brabran said, about making sure that program services can be available at every one of our schools, which we've been striving towards, but we haven't had a plan or a timeline for. And that's what we're presenting today as a plan and a timeline to do that.
No, I appreciate those clarifications. I mean, we have to be mindful to, Dr. Brabran, you touched on the point of this happened started in the seventies in the shadow of what? Deep segregation in this country. I mean, we just have to think about that. And that, you know, when, when it was no longer appropriate to use race, now we talk about advanced academics. And, and I mean, this touches on some of the language too of peer groups and parents wanting to isolate their kids in the peer groups. I, I don't want us to be kind of dumb to that, right? And, and, and not thinking about the intentional efforts that it's going to require to do right by the thousands of silent kids out there. The last thing, I'll touch on the budgeting, right? So how the, my time, but how that reflects the goals we're seeing? I don't see that consistency right now, but in any case, thank you.
I want to comment on that last point, Dr. Sidiyo.
Just real, just real briefly on the budget point before we go on. And I think the budget is, we've been discussing, is a starting point and it's significant, if we're able to achieve it, a significant investment beyond what we've invested in our programs now. So we were really trying to find something that we think could move us along the continuum of where we need to be, something that hopefully would be achievable over a three-year period of time. We would like to be able to do that on a three-year period of time or to do more or to accelerate it, but we're also trying to be realistic about what some of the budget challenge is facing on the board will be in the coming fiscal years.
Thank you, Dr. Sidiyo. Keys-Gamaro?
Thank you. Just some overall comments initially. I actually want to underscore some of the concerns expressed by Ms. Omeche. I agree with the expansion of the, of the program. I am very concerned about segregating students. I agree with the timeline and fundamentally, I'm concerned about raising the level of expectation. Dr. Brabran, I've spoken to you many times about some of the schools that I see implementing what I think needs to happen across the board. And that is the assumption that every child can be exposed to advanced academics types curriculum the moment they come in the door because it's more about development. And so that's really going to be where I'm coming from. And my next steps will be based on gathering data. I too am concerned about how we will monitor. And so I'd like some more information on that monitoring, our accountability and what structures will be in place. I'm not sure whether I need to make that into a next step. I think it was mentioned before, but I'm looking for more specifics with respect to that. And actually, how we will identify deficits across the county. We just had an extensive conversation or we're in the midst of it with respect to TJ. And many want to focus on what is happening in our pipeline. Our discussion today is saying that we're doing many things. And so I think for that reason, we may want to identify what is in place and how we might monitor that going forward. So I'll stop there and before I go into my other questions.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamaro. And I'm going to ask Kirsten to weigh in on this in just a second because I think what I'd like to do is take your question about basically the fidelity of implementation, I think is kind of what you're getting at first, because you were talking a lot about making sure that, you know, all students are exposed to rigorous engaging and enriching curriculum. And I want Kirsten to talk a little bit about our continuum of services because what we've mostly been talking about in this presentation is our Level 4 Services, which is the full-time program, our students who have been found eligible for full-time services. We do a lot through levels one through three in terms of our program services. We've really expanded some of that with the board's support through the strategic goals of making sure that all students receive access to advanced academic curriculum. So Kirsten, could you maybe talk a little bit about levels one through three and the curriculum work that you've been leading?
Sure. Thanks, Sloane. So Level 1 Services is, there's no identification for Level 1 Services. That's just all students starting in kindergarten have access to advanced academic curriculum at least once a quarter and strategies more often than that. That is something that, we had the baseline data from two springs ago and it showed that in 27% of our K through 6 classrooms, that was already happening before there was a strategic plan goal. And that goal was there to make sure that we get that up to 100%. We want all students to have at least one AP curriculum experience a quarter and then, of course, use of those strategies that are easier to integrate into every day. So that's what we want all students to be getting. I know that there are some schools that do it more often than once a quarter and that that is something that is a goal for all, all schools to be growing. The types of curriculum that are used for this are different than what many of our teachers learned in their, in their teacher preparation. And it does require them learning some different approaches. And that's again, why the, the advanced academic resource teacher is so critical, not just that we get them full-time, but that when they are in the schools, they're working with the collaborative teams, they're going in and they're co-teaching and coaching with the teachers because that's the job embedded professional development. We're not going to get teachers using that curriculum becoming to a one-day professional development on how to use Project Clarion in science. We need them to have some, some information about what that unit's about and then they need the support in the CLT and in the, in the actual teaching to be building their toolbox around what this type of pedagogy is all about. So that's Level 1 Services and why the AART is so important in, in building capacity across the whole district for all of our teachers. Level 2 Services is when, when teams of teachers and educators notice that there is a student who is outside of the norm in a particular subject area. So you can be identified for Level 2 Services for any one of the four content areas and receive more frequent access to that curriculum and those strategies in that specific subject area. And that's really important for talent development too because different students are going to have different passion areas and different interests and affinities and we want to support their development in those areas, those areas, all the way starting in elementary school, but especially as they go up into secondary school and they start picking their pathway for, for ways that they really enjoy working. That comes out a lot in one of the major curriculum models for advanced academic programs, which is the parallel curriculum model, which does talk about using advanced academic strategies with all students, but that's the parallel of identity and helping students realize what are my strengths, what are my interests, how do I pick? With advanced students, they might have multi-potentiality and they might be good at a lot of things and they might get pushed in directions that they really don't care about. And it's also important for all students because every student should be figuring out what their pathway and their strengths are. So that's Level 2 Services. Level 3 is direct services with the advanced academic resource teacher. And depending on whether there's a half-time or a full-time resource teacher and how big the school is, that can take the form of a pull-out program once a week or it could be a push-in. Of course, push-in is preferred, but if, if an AART is only there half the time or if the school is really large and, and it's spread over a lot of classrooms, it's a lot more challenging to do. But that goes along with how do we differentiate within the workshop models that are going on in our classrooms to be able to provide that extra, that extra opportunity for, for students who need that more frequent and more intense dosage of advanced academic curriculum. So I, I hope that captured. I mean, all of these things are going on. The AART is really more involved in that. And when a Level 4 is getting off the ground, they're involved in that, but that's really where all their work is, which is all the other entry points and important ways of addressing student, students' needs and strengths.
So I hear differing stories depending on where kids are. And so I'm, one of my concerns, as I said at the top, is I would like for us to be making data-based decisions and investments. And so with respect to the AART, do we have documentation on where that has made a difference in terms of with demographics, on, you know, where an AART is working and is that increasing the level of underrepresented groups getting into Level 4, taking honors classes, taking advanced classes, going into IB, going to college, getting into TJ? Because if we look at the arguments that we've had over the last several weeks ad nauseam, it would suggest that even with all of this, we're not seeing those underrepresented groups, numbers being improved. So I'd like to know where the data is to show the effectiveness of that program and also identify what tools makes them effective. You know, it could be a cooperative principle, right? It could be a number of other things. I'd like to dig down a little deeper and figure out what that is.
So, you know, we'd be happy to follow up in more detail on, on specific questions on that. But right now, I would say, I think it's really important, a couple of things to point out, as Kirsten mentioned, where the AART is full-time, we do see those metrics showing better outcomes than where we have a halftime AART. And I think the conversation with TJ has been really important because I just want to remind all of our community members that when we look at, you know, participation in Level 4 Programs, which is the highest, most rigorous level of academic programs that we have at elementary and middle school, and we look at eighth grade participation for possible incoming class of TJ, we have enough African-American and Hispanic students to fill an entire class at TJ High School. So when people say that the pipeline has broken, I would disagree with that. I think the issue on TJ is we have some challenges around our system. Now, we always want to broaden the pipeline and expand the pipeline, but I do think it's important for community members to know that pipeline is not broken. We, we do have enough African and American and Hispanic students to fill an entire class at TJ. So our work needs to be on the AAP side, figuring out how do we expand that pipeline through front-loading, through fidelity of implementation of the Young Scholars Model, through fidelity of implementation of our local Level 4 Programs so that more students, more historically underrepresented students are getting access to all levels, including Level 4 of our AAP Continuum of Services, and we'll have even more students who would be able to be admitted to future TJ classes. So I just want to separate those things out a little bit because I know there's been some community misperception on that point. Last thing I would just respond to real briefly was you had a line of questions about really monitoring and, and the metrics and things that we're using. And again, you know, we'd be happy to follow up on the next steps and get the board and to get you more information, but I do want folks to know we, we have a lot of accountability information already available and tools and resources to support that. So when we look at our implementation rubrics that are aligned to our program standards, those documents help us make determinations about how well the school is doing in implementing their programs. So when we look at local Level 4 Programs, for example, we have implementation rubrics where before the school opens the program, they need to demonstrate their readiness, that they have completed certain actions and taken certain steps, provided curriculum training for their staff members, that they've, you know, been able to do the associated community engagement work, for example. So we have a lot of resources as part of a implementation framework and monitoring framework to go along with our program standards. We have a lot of data points about participation rates in programs and performance rates in programs. So we have a lot of what I think the board is asking for. Maybe what we need to do is, you know, just do a better job sharing that with the board, but perhaps there might be other things that the board is looking for. You know, what we don't have is a lot of observational data. You know, we do a lot of observations. Nebraska's a lot of observations. We don't collect a lot of observational data. So it really just depends what the board is looking for and, you know, how you'd like to receive that information.
I'll write it up in the next step and really looking forward to gathering the data because I don't think the community understands, but we also have to realize that, you know, the large, there's a large percentage of students coming, going to TJ only from a few of our schools. We got to figure out why that's happening. So I'll take a go back. Thank you.
Ms. McLaughlin, and then Mr. Frisch.
I just, I want to just jump into a few questions right, right away. You mentioned that we'd be looking at our screening process through a variety of metrics and that one of them would follow the Virginia Regulation, which is that it needs to be a nationally-normed test. And it sounds like you're looking at the COGAT but dropping the N-N-A-T. Can you just describe exactly what and how the, how you would be utilizing the COGAT in this process? Like what, just because they take the COGAT, how are you using it to measure giftedness?
So the, the big differences between the Negliary Non-Verbal Ability Test and the COGAT, the Negliary is a, a single day test and it takes about a half hour and it's a series of puzzles and sequences and that is, that a similar, very similar test, the COGAT is made up of three sub-tests. So it has a verbal, a quantitative and a non-verbal section. So the non-verbal sub-test of that overlaps with the types of things that would happen with the Negliary. We do use the sub-test scores, not just look at the composite, and that allows us to see where there could be certain strength areas for students.
That wasn't my question, so I'll rephrase it. Maybe I didn't state it well. What are you using to benchmark and identify and say, that's a gifted COGAT score, this is not a gifted COGAT score?
So the, I mean, I think that goes back to the national norms and the local norms. And so there's two different approaches that historically in the field of gifted, they have used a national norm. And that has been one of the major shifts in the field is moving when we're thinking about equity and gifted programming to shifting to local building norms is to looking at who are the top scorers to shifting to local building norms is to looking at who are the top scores within a school and not just looking at a national norm.
So have you done a benchmark right now of looking at all 150 elementary schools to look at like a five year analysis, if not a 10 year analysis of what their COGAT scores look like, school by school among the 150 schools?
We've looked at local norming in a couple of different ways. I don't remember if we exactly did a whole five year, but I'm sorry, Sloane, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, we obviously, you know, collect that information on an annual basis. What we provided to the board here is, you know, prospective information, right? We didn't do a historical look back on the modeling. We did the modeling on what would the incoming class look like of students who, again, not would be found eligible, but would go through the eligibility screening process, central selection screening process. And that's what we included on the slides in this presentation was the students. For next year, if we use local norms, what would the percentages of students by subgroup look like that would go forward to central selection?
Again, I guess my concern is we're just looking at who, who we're going to identify to actually just go into the selection pool. But you didn't model based on your holistic process, what, what that might look like in the outcome of the selection process itself. Did you also do a analysis of the 150 schools right now of how many students are Level Three, Level Four learners? So that, you know, no matter what the elementary school is, you can actually see what are the actual numbers right now for this current year across 150 elementary schools?
We didn't include that information in this report because that wasn't part of the recommendations from the researchers that we were responding to. But we do have program information, school by school, in terms of the number of, you know, Level Four students and Level Three services that are being provided within schools. And, you know, on the modeling question as well, we can't model the outcome of the central selection process because it is a holistic process. And again, it's a comprehensive process where, you know, six different, a minimum of six different readers are reading the file. So we can't really model.
I understand that. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Sloane. I understand that. I think though, that you could at least run the modeling for the board so that we could see based on what the COGAT history has been across the 150 elementary schools. What, what are you studying even among the local norms versus the national norms? How would that look different of a COGAT score for a qualifying student into our new process? I think where I'm going at with a lot of my questions is it just goes back to the data analysis piece, which I know, Sloane, you're used to me talking about a lot over the last eight plus years. I, I do very much appreciate all the information recommendations you're bringing forward. I don't necessarily disagree with them, where my concern is the lack of analysis. And this isn't for you, Sloane, and Kirsten. This is something I've told the board chair and I've told the superintendent for more than three years. I am very concerned that we continue as a board to receive PowerPoint presentations and not report. Because you do a lot of work, Sloane, and you have so much knowledge in the work you do. But it's not here for this board to make analytical decisions based on data analysis. And so I'll have a go back where I'll talk more about that. But I think you're doing maybe a lot of the work that I'm asking questions on, but it's not here today and it's giving me pause. So thank you, Sloane.
Thank you. Mr. Fresh.
Sorry about that. I'd like to dig a little bit deeper on the question of accountability. I think, Sloane, you said that one way that we'd know whether this is working, which seems obvious, is what, what we see at the end of the day after implementation, once it's in process. Is there no way to put quality control in the, in the implementation so that we're picking up on things not working potentially in advance of, you know, waiting a year, waiting a semester?
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's what I was kind of referring to when I talked about implementation rubrics that we have that go along with the program standards. So, you know, for example, we, we have a process to go through before we implement a local Level Four school at a new site. And, you know, maybe Kirsten, you might want to talk about that in a little bit more detail. Because I do think it illustrates, you know, to Mr. Fresh's point, that we're trying to make sure that implementation is going to be successful on the front end before we even have a student walk in the door of a new program. So I want to maybe give a few more details on that.
So some of the things that we try to do, we support schools all along the way in terms of getting, you know, doing their community engagement, looking at the data. They have to write up a plan that says, this is how we plan to implement it. This is the training our teachers are going to get. This is the way that we planned, that our grouping model is going to look like this. And then we support teachers by identifying what professional development they have already had about the curriculum that they will need to use when they are the third grade teacher or the fourth grade teacher. And typically, these things expand one year at a time, so we can focus on that. We, ideally, we would love for these teachers to be practicing with a Level Four guide and as much of the curriculum as possible the year before they would be implementing. So what we often say is nobody is stopping anyone from acting like a local Level Four, even before you're official. So just go ahead and go through and do it. It's not going to hurt anybody. It's going to benefit a lot of students. And then the teacher is building their confidence in a safe environment. And then, and then they would be official the next year. We also have implemented a cohort where we bring together the new local Level Four teachers for a grade level. And the specialists in our office run that. So they look at what is coming up in the first quarter. Which curriculum are you going to have to use? Let's look at the quarter as a whole. And we're doing that even in the virtual environment. Just yesterday, the specialist led a session for Level Four teachers where they brought them together. They gave them an opportunity to talk, which was great, across schools. We're talking as third grade teachers as a group. Let's look at what's coming up in the second quarter. What are we excited about? How does the concept based approach work out with this so that we can do an interdisciplinary approach to our curriculum? And then they practice with some of the strategies in the curriculum that are within that. So we do think that that's important to, to not just get that training upfront, but also to support along the way. And so we've been trying to set it up to provide that. I think that's what you asked, but I'm not 100% sure. So let me know if I missed the mark.
It goes, it goes part of the way there. I also have a question about the rollout of expanding our AARTs at every school and Level Four. The, both of the slides talk about a five year rollout, one ending in 24. I think the Level Four says that it would be, the last year would be 2022 to 24, which is two years, if I'm not mistaken. And then for the AARTs, this is 2025, 26, which seems like, I mean, if the last eight months have been any indication, that feels like it's a good century away from now. On slide 46, though, in the budget, we're only looking at three years out, unless I'm missing something. So perhaps you could talk a little bit about the cost beyond what's projected on slide 46. And before I turn that question over to you, I do have a question about the rollover of recurring costs from year to year. And this is not to say that we shouldn't be doing this. I just want to get a good handle on it. In year one, it says we have a recurring cost that we're picking up of 2.4. In year two, we have a new recurring cost, I assume it's entirely new, of 2.9. And in year three, of 1.4. Are we not factoring in the recurring costs from the years prior? So in other words, wouldn't the, the overall cost for year two, including the recurring cost from year one, be more like $5.365 million? And the overall, you know, cost for year three, including the recurring costs for year one and year two, is $6.785 million?
So a couple of things, and I'll let Kirsten add in or correct me if I'm wrong. First of all, I think you pointed out with the sequence of the phase in timeline, we did have a typo that we had to correct. And apologize for that. I think you probably didn't get the.
There you.
I think you didn't get the updated version, so apologize for that. But we are talking about a three year timeline, so we just need to make sure that the, the years on the slides match. And you're, you're correct on the recurring cost calculation as well. What we tried to show in the chart was the new recurring costs in each of those years, not the cumulative recurring. So again, maybe we should represent that a little bit differently as well. That's a good, that's a good point that you make on that.
So the recurring costs in years coming after the full implementation would continue to be another, I guess, six point something million, $6.7 million in addition to what our standard program budget is now?
That's right. That's right. And again, as, as you obviously pointed out, that, that's largely a recurring cost because they're people. Those are positions that we would retain.
And just to clarify, all of this is slated for, at least as planned, would be three years, not five?
That's what we are advocating for and trying to.
Assuming everything goes forward.
Correct. Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the sequencing of the rollout here and how that would be designed? If it's going to take us three years to roll out our AARTs and, or additional AARTs and our Level Fours, how would this? I know that the planning is put in here and we don't fix a cost to our planning, though I think we probably should because there's an opportunity cost there too. How does that get decided as to the sequencing of rollout?
That's another really good question. So we've been working with the region offices and the region assistant superintendents and Dr. Ivy. And we started that process pre-COVID to try to have a sequence of the schools that we would phase in each year, identified for the board as part of this presentation. We don't have that finished. We, we've done quite a bit of work on it and it's pretty good. We've identified really the schools for year one. We're still trying on some of the schools to determine if they'd be a year two or a year three. The major factors that go into that decision are really related to the readiness of the school. So some schools have been doing more work with community engagement. They've been doing deeper work around use of the AAP curriculum even now in their classes. And then the other major factor really is around the facilities issues in a particular school and making sure that there's sufficient facility space. If more students are choosing to stay at their base school and electing to attend a center. So the schools that have more facilities capacity challenges are going to be the ones that you'll see more on year three. And the ones that have fewer challenges are going to be more on the other end of the continuum and timeline.
One next step I'd like to see, and I'll put this in on the doc, is what the cost might be for an appropriate scale on the AARTs for larger schools. Knowing that we have some schools that are significantly larger than others, they might need more help and what that would actually look like in practice. Thank you.
Thank you. So it is now 1:05 and we had slated on our schedule for a half hour lunch break at 1 o'clock between 1:00 and 1:30. And I know many colleagues with kids at home that need lunch. So I would propose we still have about four school board members that still need their initial opportunity to speak. But we will pick back up on that at 1:30. We'll take a short break at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan.
Thank you.